Good morning. Thank you, Matthew. Good morning supervisors, good morning community. Thanks for the opportunity to provide the COVID-19 update for today. Alvaro, if I could have my slides, please. We'll start with reviewing our status where we are in terms of case rates, vaccination rates, and then talk primarily about the exciting step we've taken regarding making vaccines available to our pediatric population. Talk about boosters and then the potential federal pending vaccine mandate. This is our current epidemic curve, our epidemic curve shows our cases every day since the beginning of the pandemic. And what this shows importantly is that we are starting to see a gradual increase in cases as we come out of the fall and into the winter as being experienced in across the region in the state. Next slide, please. Despite that, we are still in the moderate tier today. We spent the majority of last week in in terms of community transmission rates in a substantial transmission rate. This is from the CDC. And what this graphic shows is that the nation itself is really primarily in a high transmission rate, which is greater than 100 cases per 100,000 residents per week. And the state of California is also in that high transmission rate. I would expect us to move back into orange later this week. This is calculated on a daily basis. And sometimes when we have fewer tests performed on weekends, on Mondays and Tuesdays, we drop down into that moderate transmission and then come back up into substantial transmission. So when we look at our overall case rates, we are really more in that low level of substantial transmission rates. But this is where we are today. Next slide, please. And what's important here is that we are seeing that the primary contributor to that rise and increases in cases is really our unvaccinated residents. And that's on this graphic represented. You can see the case rates among vaccinated residents is relatively stable and has been now for almost two months. There's a lot more wobble within the unvaccinated residents. And despite the fact that there's this ever smaller fraction of residents who are unvaccinated, they still remain remarkably vulnerable to infection. The virus somehow is able to find those residents and is causing increases in overall case rates. Next slide, please. And this is, I know unfortunately, because we have not been able to vaccinate our five to 11 year olds, that age group has represented an ever increasing fraction of cases among unvaccinated residents. And here on the left, you see that residents aged five to 11, who are now eligible vaccinated make up 41% of cases among unvaccinated residents. So the case rates are rising in our children aged five to 11. And that's also represented on the right here in terms of that overall line. At the beginning of the year, it was less than 5% of cases. And now we're up to, you know, over time, it's over 30% of our cases in our month. Those residents who are now literally eligible to be vaccinated. Next slide, please. We'll talk more about that in a bit. This is where we're at our hospitalizations, two in the hospital, one in the ICU. So thinking back again to the protection the vaccine offers, thinking back to when we had 20 cases on average per day, which is about where we are. Prior to the vaccine, that would have translated into more than twice this number of individuals in the hospital. So the vaccine is the threat of the number of cases we have has been reduced by the fact that so many of those who are infected now are actually vaccinated and protected against severe outcomes. Next slide, please. This is updated daily and shows the effectiveness, sorry, it's updated weekly on Fridays, and it shows the effectiveness of the vaccine in Marin County, looking at our own numbers. We all know the vaccine protects against infection, hospitalization and death. But I think it's even more helpful for us in terms of our own understanding to see that, how it actually plays out within our own community. So in Marin County, people who are unvaccinated are 25 times more likely to be infected, now 84 times more likely to be hospitalized. And that's just based on our hospitalization rates and 20 times more likely to die from COVID-19. Next slide, please. These are our current vaccination rates. We've added that red indicator of our booster doses. We have now 40, almost 45,000 residents have been received booster doses in Marin. And 82% of our total population has been vaccinated. And we're really excited that that number is going to increase significantly as we are now able to bring online a whole part of our population that is up to this point not been eligible to be vaccinated, our five to 11 year olds. Next slide, please. So this is our progress. We hit the set a goal to vaccinate at least half of our residents aged 65 with a booster dose, knowing that residents who are infected after having been vaccinated, so breakthrough infections in older adults can be more serious. And hospitalizations among people who have breakthrough infections have been much more high rates in our older residents. 75% of those who have been hospitalized post vaccination in Marin are residents aged 65 and older. Fortunately, we did achieve this goal. As of yesterday, we have about the same number of unboosted and boosted residents aged 65 and older, 50%. And we want to continue. The recommendation is that everyone above age 65 receive a booster dose. Next slide, please. And this is where to find a booster vaccine. GetVaccinatedMarin.org is your best source. It links to sites with pharmacies and with healthcare providers as well as Marin County vaccination operations. Also, reach out directly to your healthcare provider. And here are represented the pharmacies offering vaccines. Next slide, please. So the big news for this week is that we're finally now able to vaccinate our five to 11 year olds. Super exciting weekend for us, a lot of success. But just to review where we started, on October 26th, the FDA reviewed the data coming out of the clinical trials with the Pfizer vaccine for children five to 11. Made the recommendation to move forward that went into the CDC. Their advisor committee recommended to supervisor, I mean to director Walensky to approve the vaccine. She did that on November 3rd, or is it November 2nd? Said the Western State Scientific Safety Review Group, independent review, also authorized and the California Department of Public Health sent us the word on November 3rd that we could start vaccinating our kids. We started that very day, that afternoon in sort of a soft launch in some of our mobile sites. And then the big launch was really November 6th and 7th, our Super Saturday. Next slide, please. And these are the results of our first weekend of vaccinating our five to 11 year olds. On Super Saturday alone, we had 1,617 five to 11 year olds vaccinated in Marin County at five different sites in partnership with public health. Two schools, two community sites, and one at North Gate Shopping Center. The schools were partnered with pharmacies, so Safeway at Miller Creek, and then at Lou Sutton School, working with Golden Gate Pharmacy, which is one of our only remaining family owned, independent pharmacies, have been critical partners for us to public health for years. And they helped mount a vaccine operation at Lou Sutton School in Nevada. So I want to shout out to Golden Gate Pharmacy. And the weekend total was 2,367 of our five to 11 year olds vaccinated. So it exceeded our expectations. And we're, you know, I think that reflects significant demand for the vaccine among our parents in Marin County. Next slide, please. I'm just remembering that when we're looking at the effectiveness of the vaccine, we saw from the clinical trials that 91% of the, that is 91% effective at reducing the risk of symptomatic infection among five to 11 year olds in those almost 3,000 children who were enrolled in those studies. But we also have even more robust data for the 12 to 17 year olds that we look to. And that was basically post rollout over the period from June through September of 2021 across 29 different hospitals or 19 different pediatric hospitals in 16 states. And what they saw was a 93% effectiveness of the vaccine in that adolescent population for preventing hospitalizations. And that's part of the real world demonstration of the safety and effectiveness of that, of the vaccine in young people that we're also applying to our five to 11 year olds. Next slide, please. So to find a pediatric vaccine appointment, we know that there was, you know, as soon as we posted the appointments, which corresponded to the amount of vaccine we received from the state, they filled within a couple hours. We know that there are some parents who are looking for vaccine appointments that were not able to find them. As we get more vaccine, we received 4,000 more doses yesterday. As we get more vaccine, we're posting more appointments. As well as our pediatric providers across the county are also now able to independently receive vaccines. So as that distribution network increases, there will be an ever increasing number of opportunities to get vaccinated, both in Marin County Public Health sites as we open more appointments, but also in pharmacies and with pediatric providers. And the best place to look is GetVaccinatedMarin.org. And we have links to our super sites. We have Saturday and Sunday, similar to last weekend, sites at schools where we're able to vaccinate more than 1,000 children in one day at those sites, in addition to links to retail pharmacies that are offering vaccines. Next slide, please. And just wanted to signal what has been a topic of a lot of national dialogue right now, which is the federal vaccine mandate. This would impact up to 1 million of America's 258 million adults, I mean 100 million. Companies with 100 more employees would need to require that their workers are either fully vaccinated or tested weekly. So this is similar to our policy with regards to our first responders in Marin County, requirement to be vaccinated or tested weekly. This would start on January 4th, 2022. It would be administered and regulated under OSHA. So in California, that's CalOSHA Occupational Safety and Health Administration. And those who are unvaccinated in the workplace under OSHA would need to be covering their faces. And then also specified is that the employer need not fund the testing for people who choose to not be vaccinated, but rather have to go undergo weekly testing. Next slide, please. Our face covering policy, so just to remind us all that while we did lift the met criteria to lift the local mask mandate in Marin County last week, because we had had three weeks in that moderate transmission tier. We had low and stable hospitalization rates and we had over 80% of our population fully vaccinated. That was the criteria we had established a month earlier in concert with the Bay Area Health Officers. So that policy, that local policy was lifted. But importantly, just want to remind everyone that there are still significant state level vaccine, I mean, sorry, face covering policies. Everyone must wear masks in the following settings, regardless of vaccination status. As public transportation, hospitals, and long term care facilities, homeless shelters and correctional facilities, and importantly, schools, indoor schools, K through 12 childcare and other use settings, regardless of vaccination status, people need to continue to cover their face indoors. Also, unvaccinated residents must wear masks in all indoor public settings. And then we are shifting from a mandate. So, you know, up till the, when we lifted the mandate up to that point, it was frankly against the law not to cover your face in indoor public settings regardless of vaccination status. We have shifted from that to a recommendation of public health, strong public health recommendation that all residents wear their face covering in indoor public settings. And if you walk around Marin now, I'm reassured in my own regular life to see that as people are going through this grocery store and other settings, that by and large, almost everyone is continuing to cover their face. And I think that's, that's based on our own understanding of the safety and effectiveness of that as a way of protecting ourselves. So we're encouraged to see that and should, should continue. And then, of course, recommending the businesses can require face covering for all, for anyone coming indoors. And there's signage that we've offered our businesses that either corresponds to really being very clear that everyone who's unvaccinated needs to continue to cover their face by law. Or if they choose, they could say, please, everyone entering this establishment, I'm sorry, cover their face, that everyone coming into that establishment, regardless of vaccine status, we want to cover their, cover their face as their own personal choice. Next slide, please. So in summary, case rates are rising slowly. Unvaccinated children five to 11 are making up an increasing fraction of our cases. Half of the residents aged 65 and older are protected with booster doses. We've had a successful launch of our pediatric vaccination campaign and more pediatric vaccinations are arriving. Our face covering policies and recommendations remain important. And we are preparing for potential federal vaccine mandate in Marin. If done well, that mandate could increase our vaccination rates even further. But we want to make sure that we're implementing it effectively in our own local jurisdiction. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation. There on the right, there's my, my 11 year old who just got vaccinated. So we're excited that he's now finally joined the rest of the family to have the protection of the vaccine.
Thank you, Dr. Willis. So we're going to go to board questions now. Look to my left, Supervisor Rice.
Hi, Dr. Willis. Thank you so much for the presentation today. Just have one question. I'm curious about the testing that is taking place now. The, I don't, I haven't looked on the website actually recently. I'm just curious about the numbers, about who is getting tested and just what that tells us right now about our sense of community prevalence. Because I'm, I'm making the assumption and I could be wrong, that we're not doing as much testing as we were in the, at the height of the pandemic, but I could be wrong there.
Right, the testing landscape has shifted. I think it's shifted in two important ways. One is that we're doing more home testing. There's been an increased availability of antigen testing that can be purchased in pharmacies. We're using that in our school settings. We have a pilot to get home antigen testing kits to all parents across Marin County schools so that they can test if a child is symptomatic in the morning to determine whether or not they're infected. Obviously, that child should not come to school, even if they are symptomatic, but it's helpful to know as early as possible whether or not they were actually infected. And that's, that's an increasingly useful practice for us. So we absolutely support ever increasing access to easy testing in people's, people's own homes. The problem with that is that it doesn't link to our surveillance systems the way the PCR testing has. In the past, PCR testing is a laboratory based test. And those, those options are still available across the county through healthcare providers and other mobile testing operations. Our data that we, that I share with you on a regular basis in terms of our case rates is based on that limited set of tests that are occurring by PCR and reported to us from laboratories, combined with what people may choose to report to us from the testing that they do at home. If you go to GetVaccinatedMarin.org, I'm sorry, HHcoronavirus.hs, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting that, our website. But our, the county website for vaccinations, for our COVID-19 response has a form where people can actually report their own results of their tests. We're looking at as a sign of prevalence, but that doesn't actually end up getting counted in the CDC's numbers in terms of our overall transmission rates. So it is possible that we are under, under counting case rates now because of that shift towards rapid antigen tests. Having said that, we still want to encourage people to have those tests available. When we're coming into the winter holidays, we're actually in the process of finalizing our guidance for safe gatherings. And we will be recommending that people, if they're hosting gatherings at their home, we will recommend that people actually test attendees who are invited to participate in that right there on that day with home antigen testing kits. So there has been a shift in testing. And this is something that we've been talking, it's California Department of Public Health about. But how do we actually maintain our visibility on case rates, given the fact that so many tests are happening outside of our view currently?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Willis. And I, and it'll be an interesting conversation going forward because we're not getting the same, as clear a picture as we used to, I would guess.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Moulton Peters, anything this morning? Supervisor Arnold, okay. Supervisor Conley.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Dr. Willis, for the report and as always, everything you and your staff are doing. It's great news that we're seeing good numbers on the five to 11 year old community members getting the vaccine. At the same time, and perhaps this was because it is the initial rollout, we did hear reports of kind of folks having to scramble to get appointments. Many folks took the day off to just kind of get their child in line. Many slots for the shots filled up before schools even got notice out. So the question is, are vaccines for five to 11 year olds going to be more widely available by the end of this week?
Absolutely. The, you know, this is really just the very first week. This, there's not a, there's not a limit on the supply. We're hearing from the federal government that there's ample supply of pediatric vaccines, which makes sense because it's the Pfizer product. It's already been established, it's one third dose. But it does come in different vials with different needles. So the equipment that goes along with it is also dedicated to pediatrics. And it's just, there was a matter of actually getting that, getting that flowing from, from federal sources out to states and then down to local jurisdictions. And that just takes a little while to kind of make sure that we have enough. So the first week, we had more demand than supply. But that problem will shift towards, I think we'll have more supply than demand within, you know, two to three weeks. The message is, you know, you will, you will have an opportunity to have your child vaccinated if you're seeking vaccine within, within the month. And certainly this week, again, we got 4,000 new doses yesterday. We've opened those appointments. So there'll be more and more appointments available. And 12 pediatric practices that we know of, at least in Marin, will be offering vaccines this week and next week that we're not able to offer them up to this point. So for those that feel frustrated, we're unable to find an appointment, I'm confident they'll be able to find one within the next couple of weeks.
That's great news. And just a follow up question on shots. We, we've heard that parents, in many cases, were able to walk in and receive a shot for their child and that these opportunities were not shared through official channels. So the, the issue is always people with time, resources, connections are able to access healthcare through informal means. We want to make sure that the opportunity is to the whole community. So do we have a sense that the word is getting out there enough to, to a broad segment of the community?
And we're working very closely with our, with Marin County Office of Education, with our school communities. Obviously, every, every child five to 11 is in a school in Marin County. And so it's a really effective strategy for us to be working through the schools, both for the communications and for the, for the actual provision of vaccine. We have at least eight different school sites established across the county in all areas. We'll be out in West Marin at a school tomorrow to be vaccinating children who are, who attend school in those settings, especially in some of our larger public schools in low income communities. That's one of our primary strategies to ensure equity in terms of access to the vaccine. So that, and then, you know, for everyone, including, including those that are part of those communities, if they're not able to or ready to be vaccinated when we are at their school, they can access the vaccine through conventional channels. We also offering vaccine in the canal area of Centerville and other lower income areas outside of school settings in mobile operations. So it's consistent with how we proposed our vaccine distribution plan thus far with a strong focus on equity.
Great. And a thank you in that it sounds like parents are able to get their boosters when they bring their children in as well. So we're seeing some positive reviews on that.
Yeah, that's, that's true in some settings, but not all. And they should, they should check in advance. Some of the, some of the sites, especially our Super Saturdays, where we really find it's much more efficient to just have one product dedicated for our children. Because again, it is a separate vaccine, separate vials, et cetera. So some of the, some of the sites are not offering vaccine to adults at the same time, but many are.
Great. And turning to boosters, you talked about the rollout of that and some of the numbers. I guess the follow up question is, are we seeing the expected number of people receiving boosters based on our vaccine data? How are the numbers looking in terms of what we're seeing?
Yeah, I think it's, it's been a sort of a national experience that there wasn't as much interest in the booster doses as, as public health, you know, as we, as we had hoped. I think some of that was that there was a lot of mixed messaging that was coming out from the federal government as this moved forward. But we're, we're, we're confident, you know, we're in with half, half of our residents aged 65 plus. That's higher than other, we're seeing in other jurisdictions. And again, consistent with our status of having a, you know, a community that is seeking the protection of the vaccine with the highest vaccination rates in the state. But we really want to get everybody in, you know, to have a booster. There's no reason at this point not to, especially as we come into the holidays, as we're seeing more evidence of the virus is flowing a little bit more in our community as it is across the region. And, and there's ample supply.
So a community member asked kind of as a follow up, how is word getting out about the booster shot? So we can get those numbers up.
Well, you know, I'm not sure. I'm not sure where you're, where you're looking for information. If you're not aware that you should, you know, that you're eligible for a booster, if you're age 65 plus. I think we've been pretty clear that we're recommending that our residents aged 65 plus get boosters. And that's been a message that's been consistent since they became eligible. We set a goal, smart goal, 50% of our residents aged 65 plus should get boosters. Most like Kaiser, 50% of our covered lives in Marin County are Kaiser members pretty much. And Kaiser has also sent out, you know, emails and to all of their residents who are eligible for boosters that they can obtain a booster shot. Pharmacies are able to offer boosters. So I, you know, I'm open to any suggestions anyone has regarding the messaging itself. I think at this point, the rate limiting factor on this is actually the behavior and people actually taking, taking those, taking advantage of those opportunities that have been available throughout the county in multiple locations for the past few weeks and months, in fact.
Great, just a couple more questions. As the weather begins to cool off and people prepare for Thanksgiving, what are your thoughts and recommendations? How many, how will recommendations be different this year now that vaccines are readily available?
The recommendations, we're still going to, you know, be recommending that people exercise prudence when they're gathering, you know, over the holidays. We know that one of the, one of the contributors to the increased case rates in the winter months is that people are gathering indoors more. And it's higher risk when those are, when those gatherings occur with people across households. And one of the most important new recommendations is going to be, as I mentioned for Supervisor Rice's, Supervisor Rice's question, that the role of testing, using that rapid antigen test, simple, effective, available. It's about $10 per test, the price should probably go down. That can be done on the day of, you know, a gathering. So on Thanksgiving, you know, part of the Thanksgiving routine would be doing a test in the morning on Thanksgiving. If you're planning to get together with friends or family members who are from out of town, indoors over a meal, where you're not going to be able to cover your faces. It's, it makes sense to, to ensure that anyone who's going to be in that setting is not infectious to others because they may not always have symptoms. The good thing about the rapid antigen test is that they are effective at determining whether or not you are infectious to others. They're not quite as sensitive as the PCR test. But if you have enough virus to actually be a threat and infectious to others, the rapid antigen test is a good test to detect that level of virus. So that's going to be an added feature of our recommendations for safe gatherings this year.
Great. And then finally, the concurrent issue of the flu. Are we seeing a surge in the flu? And do we have metrics on how many people have gotten the flu shot?
We are not yet seeing an increase in influenza transmission in Marin. We typically don't see in November, it's remarkably predictable as a seasonal. Last year was a, was an exception to a well established rule, basically, that in December, first couple of weeks in December, we start seeing our first flu cases. And then it increases up through February, kind of peaks in March, and then comes down relatively quickly. That's the seasonality of influenza. So we're coming into that period now. The good news is that this, that gives us time. Those who are not yet vaccinated against influenza, if they get vaccinated in the next, you know, three weeks or so, you're really protected from the beginning of what we would predict to be that, that uptake. We are seeing, you know, we do have testing occurring throughout our system. Our hospitals do regular testing of influenza. Many of our sites do COVID-19 testing and influenza testing. We're also getting that surveillance from the state. We haven't seen that surge, that uptick in influenza cases yet, but would expect to. There's some theory that because we went through a year last year where we had a lot less, we had almost no flu because of everything we were doing to protect ourselves with social distancing and facial covering. There, there's a sort of an immunologic deficit, if you will, across the entire population because we haven't sensitized our community against influenza and possibly could actually have a rebound where this year could be worse. So there's a, you know, I think another reason to go. rebound where this year could be worse. So there's a, you know, I think another reason to to go ahead and take the protection of the flu shot. Most places that are offering COVID nineteen vaccines are also offering flu shots, and you can get them at the same time.
Thank you.
Dr. Willis, could you please just review a little bit about the North Gate location? Who's eligible for boosters there? What shots are available there? And how long that might be open? It's a partnership.
Yep, yep. North Gate Shopping Center is open Tuesdays through Saturdays for for vaccinations. On weekdays, it will be both for adults and children. And it's available by appointment. So because we now have increased demand, both on the pediatric and the adult side, we need to be able to predict how many people might come in and also make sure that we're not over promising in terms of people walking in and then not being able to have access to access to the vaccines. They're able to do about four hundred appointments total between adults and children each weekday. And then on weekends, it's it will be at least through the month of of November, on Saturdays, will be purely dedicated to children. We're able to offer vaccines to about a thousand children each day. And that's really to help make match that that demand, that encouraging demand we're seeing for pediatric vaccines at at North Gate.
Thank you, Dr. Willis.